Ms. Burbank, you're good to go.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 24th, 2022 Planning Board hearing in the Select Board hearing room. It'll always be the one, so I'm sorry, but then we can. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as printed.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You can join by Zoom or by phone. Go to the planning board's website and we all will see production. Okay, our first item on this agenda is public hearing special permit accessory dwelling at 31 Peggy Beach Road. In accordance with Mass General laws, chapter 48, section 9 and 11, and constituent zoning bylaws, section 530 accessory dwelling special permit, and section 940 referrals, the planning board will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Thursday, March 24th, 2022 in the Select Board's hearing room at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Bushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owner Nicholas Akamando for an accessory dwelling special permit in a proposed second-story addition to a single-family home at property located at 31 Peggy Beach Road, situated property and shuttle on accessory map block parcel 56-1-7. Plans are available for review within the board office, et cetera, et cetera. Others and other interested parties are invited to attend to talk this call. Right, and Mr. DeLeese, you are here representing the applicant, is that the case?
I am. Thank you very much.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. It's been a while. I'm glad I lost all my hair since last time I was here.
I guess that's what we do here.
So actually, my client Nicholas is on the telephone right now.
Okay.
Participating by Zoom. So for the record, Jeff DeLeese, I'm a lawyer from Orberg, DeLeese &amp; Harris. Briefly, the property is located in a R3 zoning district. It contains a 900 square foot, two-bedroom, single-family dwelling that complies in all respects with the dimensional setback criteria of the zoning bylaw. The house is located in an area of second cliff that's dominated by large two, three-story homes that in many cases are quadruple the size of this one. The applicant proposes to construct an approximately 708 square foot addition in the second floor, which could be done without planning board approval as a simple zoning finding, but for the fact that we're seeking to use that space as an accessory dwelling. Presently, Nick's in-laws reside at the property, longtime constituent residence, and they will continue to reside at the property. Nick and his wife and his kids frequently visit. About four months out of the year, basically the entire summer, holidays and so forth. Their family's growing and they're running out of room, so in this case, they've provided a notarized document to the board, which is part of the application procedure, not the criteria of the zoning bylaws, which indicates that they will occupy one of the dwelling units on the property. There's zero intention in this case, unlike some other homes in Situate, to rent the accessory dwelling or put it on Airbnb or anything to that effect. To address the purposes of the bylaw, which frequently is asked of me when I come in for accessory dwelling special permit applications, I would say this is about as quintessential of an accessory use as possibly could be. It allows for aging parents with modest means to continue to live in a very expensive area of the town affordably. It allows Nick and the kids to spend time with their nan and pop. It protects the values in the neighborhood insofar as it is tastefully done, does not run afoul of any zoning regulations, does not overcrowd the land. It maintains the Cape cottage-y kind of salt box feel of those few remaining homes in Peggy Beach that are relatively modest still. To address the standards and criteria of the bylaw, this will be a separate housekeeping unit. There will be no other accessory dwellings on the property. It's proposed to be located within the interior of and underneath the same roof. Its design still, as I indicated, maintains cottagey charm appearance of the existing dwelling while having secondary means of degress. Its size is smaller in most cases than just about every garage on Second Cliff. It's about 200 square feet smaller than the first floor unit, and it will be used in a manner, as I indicated, that would be incidental to the full-time use of the property on the first floor. Its size, it is, well, it does not exceed greater of 750 square feet or 40 feet of the total square foot, the existing floor area of the existing house. So we meet that criteria, and that doesn't even count the basement, which is an unfinished basement. There's ample parking on the property. We will be required to comply with safety standards for building codes, which is, I think, kind of goes a little bit also to the purpose of accessory dwellings and why this town allows it. A lot of accessory dwellings that are not legitimized in the town. So this is a nice way of ensuring safety. And we're going to have to comply with all codes, including the building code. Properties on town, silver and town water. So I think it's a pretty straightforward application. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Yeah. All right, so it's pretty much complies with the bylaw. The accessory dwelling is 708 square feet. It's 78.67% of the floor area of the primary dwelling, but it's either 7, it's 40% of the floor area or 750, whichever is greater. So they're choosing the greater being the 708. So technically, that floor area complies with the zoning bylaw. Think we're all set there? I think we're all set there. Uh, how many questions did this panelists? Jeff?
It's, so it's conforming to all the setback requirements they presented. Is the lot itself conforming to current law?
No, the lot is pre-existing non-conforming. The dwelling is conforming dimensionally, and we're not expanding the dwelling. We're just going up, and it's not even close to the height limitation in the bylaw.
Right, right. So you would not have to go to this board to deal with it?
Not sure about that. I was thinking about that on the way over here. My opinion is when you get a special permit, you shouldn't have to go to another permit board like the ZDA, but as building suspenders, we might have to. I'll defer to Bob on that question. What the zoning bylaw says is that the, in the circumstance, we have a pre-existing non-conforming lot with a conforming building, building inspector has latitude to issue a building permit absent requiring zoning so long as the increase is no more than 20% in gross floor area compared to the existing. So I'll let Bob make a call if he can go with the go.
This is 78.67% increase, way more than 20%.
I understand that, that this is a special permit planning board. I've been into this conversation in court before, and I know at least one judge who thinks that when a special permit is required under the zoning bylaw, that should be sufficient, but it's up to Bob, and Bob can make a call. And we're happy to go to the ZDA.
But it's just going straight up, right? So we're not, we're not making any less conformant?
Yeah.
I think the issue is whether or not you have to elevate it.
Well, that's going to be a call for Bob. And what the building code says, because it's kind of a strange situation insofar as, for some reason, so all of you are familiar with the location of this property. For some reason, the property is technically located in the velocity zone, which is a special flood hazard area under FEMA regulation. And what the building code says in that circumstance is if you are doing work to the building that exceeds half of the value of the building, you have to bring it up to full code compliance. So that's something that we always deal with at the time of filing a building permit application.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, props are on the second floor?
Say again?
Yeah, no, props are better be upstairs without on the first floor.
I think that, you know, actually, you pointed out something good. I think my cover letter said nan and pop going up.
Yeah.
But that's not what it's going to be.
Okay, that's okay. They don't need to do stairs.
Yeah.
Yes.
They need, it's a little house, they put huge houses.
They just keep getting bigger and bigger. Okay, um, Rob?
No comments?
This is a public hearing. Is there any of the audience that would like to comment on this special permit? Anybody on Zoom?
If you'd like to make comment in your remote, you can raise your hand down through the bottom of your screen. Five participants or wave at us, or hit star nine if you're on the telephone.
No comment? Karen, do you have anything from you to want to add?
Um, no, I think.
It's covered.
I think it's covered.
I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on February 15th, 2022, applicant owner Nicholas Akamando applied for special permit for accessory dwell in a single-family home on the property at 31 Peggy Beach Road. Two, according to the town constituent's accessory records, M.D., the property at 31 Peggy Beach Road owned by Nicholas Akamando and Diana Akamando of Raleigh, North Carolina, both owners signed the accessory dwelling special permit application. Three, based on floor plans submitted with the application, the planning board finds the floor area of the accessory dwelling to be 708 square feet. The floor area of the primary dwelling is 900 square feet. The accessory dwelling is 78.7% of the floor area of the primary dwelling. This does meet the size requirements of 530.2F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings. As the bylaw allows, 750 square feet of 40% of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater, the accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. The accessory dwelling unit will be a complete, separate housekeeping unit. There will only be one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R3 zoning district. Proposed accessory dwelling structure needs all proposed accessory dwelling structure needs all required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located on the second floor of the single-family home. Access will be via a stairway on the east side of the home with an additional set of stairs to the rear. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the certified plot plan for 31 Peggy Beach Road, situated mass by McKenzie Engineering Group dated 5/17/2021, shows the location of the existing primary dwelling and the proposed accessory dwelling. The plan shows an existing gravel driveway, which has four existing nine-foot by 18-foot parking spaces. This appears adequate to combine two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the applicant slash owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that an owner will occupy one of the dwelling units at 31 Peggy Beach Road. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by Town Water and Sewer. The water department has commented that a separate water line and meter is required and $14,000 connection fee for the second service. The sewer department has indicated that half a sewer per each fee is required to connect to Town Sewer, currently $8,000. Eleven, the applicant meets the standards of the constituent zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling special permit. Uh, any additions, subtractions, things that you want to change or add? I'll second. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor of the findings of fact?
Aye.
Right.
I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at 31 Peggy Beach Road with the following conditions. In addition to standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by planning board after a public hearing on 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform to architectural plans submitted with the application by A. Kearney Architects consisting of proposed floor plans at 31 Peggy Beach Road consisting of A100, A101, A102, proposed elevations of A201, A202, A203, A204, as-built floor plans at 31 Peggy Beach Road by A. Kearney Architects consisting of as-built floor plans, AB100, AB101, as-built elevations, AB201, AB202, AB203, certified plot plan for 31 Peggy Beach Road, situated mass by McKenzie Engineering Group dated May 17, 2021. Two, the number of bidders in the accessory dwelling is limited to two in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, the proposed elevation of the primary and accessory dwelling may not be changed in any way without review of the planning board to determine if any changes are insignificant or require a special permit modification. Five, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1 yearly. Six, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, zoning board of appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Seven, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Eight, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW, the Water Division, for the accessory dwelling. The DPW is requiring a separate water service for the accessory dwelling. Nine, sewer connection must meet all requirements of the DPW sewer commission division for the accessory dwelling. The DPW is requiring a separate sewer service for the accessory dwelling. Ten, any lining installed shall be downlighted to not shed light on abutting properties. Eleven, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays. Sundays are legal, state, and federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and all other construction activities. Um, do we have somewhere that we can add no parking in the street by any of these instructions?
Can I add that right here?
Doesn't the town have a bylaw that deals with parking on public streets?
We do not want construction vehicles parked or idling on public streets. It's one of the items that we do. Is it not fair?
There might be a circumstance I can envision where trucks might need to be on the street in.
This is a very narrow area, and depending upon when this construction is going to start, and it's the main drag to Peggy Beach Beach.
I would feel a little more comfortable if we could put something like applicant should use diligent efforts to, to not have that occur. I mean, you don't want phone calls.
That's a pretty big driver they have inside, right?
Yes.
Well, maybe we can do a compromise.
I don't know what to say. I mean, yeah, sometimes you're going to have to check, yeah. I mean, I see, yeah.
No, no parking in the street is allowed for construction vehicles. And, I mean, I'm trying to think of the condition on 18-4, where we allow maximum of 15 minutes
Right.
without, um, with, and, you know, please, please be notified. Yeah, we allowed 15 minutes at the suggestion of the police department. But something, I don't remember the exact condition on 18-4.
Did the police department provide a referral, comment on this application?
No, they did not.
That sounds good. We'll take it.
So, I mean, can I add?
Yes, you may.
Can I take the condition from 18-4?
Yes, you may. Thank you. Well, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Thirteen, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk saw shall be used as necessary.
And so I have, when you would like to prompt me, I have a couple small comments. Condition number five, the word living. So the condition says upon occupancy of accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units. Your bylaw only requires a notarized affidavit to say that the owner occupies one, and there is a difference in the legal term. I'd like to stay consistent with the bylaw.
Occupies, okay.
Okay. And then, um, conditions 12 and 13 deal with water runoff, erosion, sedimentation control devices. And I understand the board has a special permit oversight, so, and I don't foresee an issue. I just wanted to point out that the bylaw that deals with drainage indicates that adequate provision shall be made for the disposal of sewer waste and drainage generated by the occupancy of accessory dwellings in accordance with the requirements of the Board of Health. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, is the Board of Health that runoff requirements that I need to be aware of?
We condition these on every accessory dwelling. No, the Board of Health does not have runoff requirements that we know. We, we do this for the protection of the town.
Well, I just say it only because this property is exempt from stormwater requirements. So I don't understand why we're imposing stormwater requirements when it's exempt. Can somebody explain that to me?
I think it's just sort of common sense, Jeff, that when you put elevate something and you have new drains and whatever, we just want to make sure it doesn't end up on the street.
Okay.
That's all.
Thanks.
It's nasty. It's nasty more than anything else. I don't expect this to be flooded, but we're just trying to cut from our bases.
I know. We're just in the velocity zone, so it's a lot.
Well, when the waves come in, we can deal with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. May I have a second as amended? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, Mr. DeLeese.
Thank you very much, and to the staff for good oversight. I appreciate it.
I'd just like to say thank you on my end, too. This is Nick. Very much appreciated.
Oh, you're so welcome, sir. Enjoy.
All right. Thank you.
Please just make sure you leave the meeting and don't end the meeting until our co-hosts. Otherwise, it's duck. Thank you. Yep, yep.
The loss of zone.
Yep.
Seventeen, I heard somewhere in the U N A C was talking about why they think that the elevations could be looking like four and a half of the ground zone overall.
Did you get a loma?
Yeah, a loma.
I need to get one of these things.
Hello, in the letter of map amendments or letter no more, which would be better in matter of vision. So they had to come out and get elevation.
I'm just thinking. So I guess where that would set the report. And in term that it's difficult, and I will share that and I can sit down. Questions?
We can.
On the call.
Public hearing is scheduled for 3/46. Since this is a public meeting as opposed to a public hearing, and the applicant is here, I believe we can start. Gentlemen.
Evening.
Good evening. And you're back in because you have changed this plan. And you're still, I think, okay with issues with it. Going in the right direction. You received, uh, basically a honor list from Karen.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Yes, well, it's been exceedingly busy, and we were doing the best we can to keep up with all of what's happening around here, especially with the town meeting looming ever March. Okay?
As well as we are here.
All right, so Karen, I'll give it up to you. Unless you guys have something you want to say.
Yeah, we'd like to go through the plan quickly to show the changes on what was submitted to the board. So I can run through those because you actually, each board member had certain things that they were looking for at the last meeting. Um, I had the benefit of actually watching the meeting within the last hour and jotting down what people were looking for and if people had issues with certain things. And I'll go through them a little bit as quick as I can. If you've seen, have you seen the plan already? Have you seen the changes that we need to make?
Okay.
Do you want to have Ray go through those real quickly?
Yes.
And then I'll read my desk.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So for the record, for every Morse registered engineer, Morse engineer representing the property owner, Chris Horn, who's with us in the audience tonight. The property is at 46 Hollick Street. This is an administrative review. This is not a special permit. This is not a variance. This is an administrative review for what's referred to as a common driveway. This is a common driveway that will serve two lots, lot one being a new construction, lot two being the existing home. As you likely recall from the last meeting, we're utilizing the existing driveway for number 46 Hollick Street. We are expanding upon that driveway width-wise as well as length-wise to provide access to that lot, too. When I presented the plan at the last meeting, there were several things that you had commented on. We revised the plan and we submitted it on March 3rd with a cover letter outlining those changes. I highlighted those additional items that were specifically asked for at the meeting. And at the end of that meeting, I believe we asked if that was all of the information that was requested, and we got no response. What I've highlighted on the plan here are the changes that we made. I've highlighted in green on the presentation board, the trees. You requested that we add the trees that were greater than 12 inches in diameter on the site. So we have added all of those. There was a request that additional spot grades be added along the driveway to determine if there was going to be puddling along the driveway or not. You'll see that I've highlighted in pink additional spot shots that were added to the plan. Looking at those spot shots and the contours, it is clear and evident that there is no puddle.
that there is no puddling proposed along the driveway. Also highlighted in pink are two rectangular boxes, one on lot one and one on lot two, which depict the proposed septic system locations. We determined that we needed to depict those for review with the common driveway. So I've highlighted those two box locations on lot one and lot two. Along the southern property line, um, there was a request for screening with respect to the abutment. What I've highlighted in yellow is a six-foot proposed fence which would run from Hollet Street back on the property to provide screening to the abutment to the south. We had also provided at the last meeting and subsequent to that approvals from Deputy Chief Al Elliott as well as the new Deputy Fire Chief Donovan uh, with regards to the emergency fire truck turnaround at the site. Your requirements are a twenty-foot by thirty-foot emergency turnaround, which is clearly depicted on the plan, and both deputy chiefs have opined that it is acceptable in this case. You had requested that we add the lot widths for both lot one and lot two. You'll see that I've highlighted those in blue. Uh, note that lot two, the existing house, the lot width is measured in parallels to the common driveway, which is allowed per your bylaw. Those were the requested changes, and those are the changes that were made to satisfy all of the comments at the last meeting. Yesterday, we did however receive the additional comments from Ms. Joseph. Does the board have copies of those comments? Does everyone have those? I brought extra copies. Anyone just missing them?
No.
You have it. Today, looking at those comments, which I believe were all extremely minor in danger, we made revisions to the plan, which I wrote through to address them. I've also highlighted the planned changes. Item number one had to do with the intersection site distances as you pull in and out of the driveway. As you are at the front of the site, as you look to the left, as you look to the north, there is unobstructed site distance, two hundred and fifty feet, which is the Ashco standard. As you look to the south on Hollet Street, though, there are several trees that are in the way, four trees. There was a meeting today with the tree warden, and I believe the town planner would agree that the tree warden has opined that those trees can be taken down. They are located in the right way. They are not specimen trees. We've identified those and we've highlighted in yellow on the plan a note indicating that it's okay to remove those if necessary. I say the word if necessary because if you go up to the site and you look, those trees aren't a significant impediment as you look to the south. And you have full site distance if you pull to nine feet from the white line as opposed to fifteen feet where you typically take the measurement from. Um, at nine feet back from the white line, your car is not in the travelway. There was no safety concern whatsoever at this location. I would add, we also reviewed the two intersections with respect to the site. We looked at Sedgwick Drive, which for reference, as you look to the north, has approximately a hundred feet of site distance. As you look from Sedgwick Drive to the south on Hollet Street, there's approximately a hundred and fifty feet of distance. As you go along Hollet Street, we looked at the whole brush farm intersection to Hollet Street. Looking to the north, again, there's approximately a hundred and fifteen feet of site distance. And looking to the south, a lot of obstructions, almost a hundred feet of site distance there. Ours complies with Ashco requirements with those trees coming down. Uh, and we have approval from the tree warden to do so if that's necessary. That note has been added. You'll see it highlighted in yellow on the plan. Item number two was in regards to drainage on the common driveway. Um, what I've highlighted on the plan are notes number eight and note number eleven. Note number eight specifically shows that with respect to the drainage to Hollet Street, when reducing the impervious land area, there's over a hundred square feet of less impervious running to Hollet Street. Therefore, there's a reduction naturally in runoff to Hollet Street. Note number eleven requires that at the time that the rear lot is built and the driveway to the rear lot from station one plus ten to the end, that a stormwater permit would be required. You're likely aware that the cost of permitting a stormwater permit in this town is significant. The applicant doesn't want to undertake that responsibility until there's assurance that the common driveway is approved by this planning board. But note number eleven has been put in place and a stormwater permit would be required for the rear lot to assure you that there is no increase in rates or volumes runoff. That's been highlighted in orange on the plan. There was a request for more spot grades. I've highlighted in pink the high point on the profile. I've highlighted in pink the spot grade in the driveway indicating that drainage break. We believe there are plenty of spot grades. There is profile provided. The contours are depicted on the plan. We believe there is more than sufficient spot elevation and contour elevation. You'll note that the contours show that the driveway is cross-pitched onto the applicant's property. It's directing water away from the abutment's property line and onto the applicant's home property. The next comment here was in regards to the fence. Not sure it goes far enough, was the comment. You'll note that I've highlighted in blue the extension of the fence. We'll propose the fence all the way from Hollet Street to the intersection of lot two. That goes well beyond the abutment's house to the south. We feel that that takes care of adequate adequate screening. A new application should be submitted. The length of the common driveway. The comment here is with respect to the length of the common driveway now extending all the way to lot two as opposed to in the past, we had just considered the front portion of the driveway uh, to be common before it split off. At this point, we're considering the whole driveway the common driveway. It measures, you can measure it two ways. It's a hundred and eighty-five feet of common driveway on the subject property, or it's two hundred and thirteen feet from the center line of Hollet Street. Both are under the five hundred foot requirement and the bylaw requiring a special permit. Either way, you record it. I'm going to give the new application to you, Secretary, now. And the last comment is with regard to the fire department's requirement of the turnaround may be technically met according to the fire department. You have two letters of correspondence from the former deputy fire chief as well as the current deputy fire chief indicating compliance with the requirement. I don't know why we continue to talk about the turnaround at this location.
Why do we need it since there's going to be a turnaround at the top of the new adage?
That's not part of the common driveway. That was added in at the end specifically to address the concerns that a couple of the members had. What happens if the driveway is an extensive length? I think Ben, that was one of the comments you had. You wanted to see how long the driveway would be. And in order to ensure that, it's actually an ambulance that they're looking to turn around. They want to make sure that if the horns, as they're getting older, have an ambulance show up, they're going to be able to turn around up there. So we didn't have the requirement to make it twenty feet by thirty feet, but we decided we'd make it twenty by thirty anyways. So technically, it's not the fire turnaround, but it is a private turnaround that shows that will be adequate for the apparatus that they need. So it's not part of the common driveway. The common driveway ends at the property line because we were told that it wouldn't be a common driveway unless it made it all the way to the property.
That's correct.
Which, again, I disagree with it.
That's correct.
In some examples of other ones, but that's irrelevant because we gave you everything that you were looking for in this application. Okay? Everything that the board asked for. Again, I went back and watched the meeting an hour ago. I wrote down all the stuff. We made sure we have everything on here. And I think we addressed everybody's concerns on all of them. I appreciate the fact that the board's allowing us to go through these comments because, again, I know Karen's busy. We just got the comments, but we were able to address the stuff that I didn't meet with the tree warden. So she can make a comment on that. But I, I, when I talked to the tree warden and I looked at this, Greg's right. From a technical standpoint, you take the measurement from fifteen feet back from the travelway. If you were seventeen feet back from the travelway, you can see beyond the tree. If you're at fourteen or thirteen feet, you can see through these trees. If you, you know, if you want to see the picture a little closer, you can, or if you've been out to the site, it's just exactly at fifteen feet back, you can't see that. So what I asked the tree warden was not to tell us to remove the trees, to leave that up to you guys. Because if you think that we still can see coming out there without a problem, I don't think you have to remove all these trees. If you, if you want them out, we'll take them out. Um, I think we've done it before with the planning board where they've actually allowed the construction of the driveway. And some board members went up and looked at it and said, yeah, we want the trees out, or we don't. Uh, because there's no reason to take them if you, if you feel fine pulling out the driveway. And the horns have been pulling out this driveway for twenty years, Chris.
Twenty?
Yeah. Um, so we, instead of making us save the trees out, I figured if we could save them, we'd save them. But we can meet the technical requirement at fifteen feet if the trees need to be removed.
Karen.
I talked to Mike Breen this afternoon. He told me three trees really should come down. The town will not take care of it. The town will not remove the trees. It would be up to the applicant. And he will be looking for replacement trees for, for them. So if the board decides that that's what ultimately is going to happen, then that will be a condition of the permit.
If I could add to that just a little bit. These trees are not on-site, okay? They're in the town layout. So what he wants us to do is to provide trees for their, their tree park, whatever they have, so that they can use them somewhere else in town. So he's not looking to have the trees put right back in front of this property.
That's a correct statement. He's not looking for the trees to be right there, but he's looking for-
But they can use them where they want.
He's looking for a sizable tree that the applicant will be required to plant.
Yeah. And that's been done before as well when we removed something out there. And I talked to Chris Horn today. He has no problem with that either.
I'll open up to forty-four minutes and comments now.
No comments.
I'm not good. I understand exactly what you're talking about in terms of the panel that we have here with the common driveway. And initially, the common driveway theoretically was ending at the corner of the garage. And now it's ending up at the which is where it should have been. And my concern is that you're taking out a tree aesthetically in this lovely home. If you have the room in front of the garage for an ambulance to turn around in, then what's the difference in leaving the patio and whatever there? If you're coming back in for aesthetic, to put in a new dwelling, you will have to have a turnaround up there.
We're showing turnaround up at the end of it, but that's not part of the common driveway.
I understand, Stephen.
Yeah.
I just have an issue with this.
What portion?
I have an issue with these four parking spaces. And the fact of the matter is, you've got a garage right next to it.
The turnaround's not parking spaces. So there's two parking spaces outside. Bylaws require us to have two parking spaces for dwelling in the neighborhood. We've actually added on the plan, you can see the two spaces inside the garage are routinely used. So the two spaces that are outside are actually optional spaces. And if that's the issue, I can tell you that in the bylaw, section seven twenty, there is no requirement that says that you can't park on the common driveway. Routinely, the developers that come in to do these driveways work with the board, and the board asks for a condition that says that we won't park there. So there, in, in the letter, it basically says that it's, it's not allowed. That's not true, okay? It can be allowed. It's not illegal. There's nothing in this section that says if you want to change the common driveway bylaw to say there shall be no parking on any portion of a common driveway. I'd make that a suggestion. It's just been routine that, and I've developed a lot of these common driveways in town. So routinely, it's not a problem at all with people parking on the common drives. But we accept it as a condition that they can't do it. We physically showed two positions outside the house. It's kind of ironic that I drove over there to meet the tree warden today, and there were two cars that were parked in front of the garage. Both of them were parked at an angle, almost like what shows on the plan here. I had to take a picture of it. Uh, you know, it was perfect. And I said, it works. But technically, that area is going to be paved. So they'll absolutely be able to get an ambulance in and out of there without a problem. And that's what they look for. That's what the, the chief told me. That's what they want.
Can I ask a question, Charlie? Where is your snow going, helping us along the driveways?
Say that again?
Where is your snow going?
Uh, it's going to go on the edges of the driveway.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, there's no, there's no planned spot for a single-family home to say where they're going to put their snow.
On the common driveway.
Uh, oh, the common driveway is going to be cleared off. They have to, they have to maintain that and keep it clear so the fire department can come in.
And where are you? So the snow's up and you push back into the turnaround.
No.
Okay?
No, they, they, I mean, all common driveways have to keep that turnaround clear. And that's, and that certainly is a condition that we'll accept that they have to make sure that that's maintained for the purpose of a fire turnaround. Again, and I understand that, you know, in, in, in reading the letter that we just received, um, you know, I full well came in that I'm like, I wasn't extremely happy, but I knew that we could meet all of these things. And, you know, they have a twelve-inch holly tree. We did a driveway in the first parish road and not with this town planner, with another one. We had a pine tree out there, okay? The pine tree ended up in pieces that day. And I said, is there anything else you want to talk about? The horns have the right to remove the tree in their property.
I understand that, Stephen. I do.
And the stone wall that's indicated out there, they built it. And it's not, it's not a historical stone wall. It's a little landscape wall that they have. So they want, they, they don't have a problem with the turnaround. Okay? Because they want the house in the back, and in order to meet the bylaw, this is what we have to do.
May I see that picture, please?
In this picture, the stone wall along the front, along Hollet Street, we're actually showing that we're going to take the stones and extend that wall along Hollet Street. Only a portion of that wall gets removed.
It's not a scenic road out there, but I know. I can tell you it shows where we use those stones.
Are you proposing to remove all of this vegetation?
No.
We don't touch that vegetation at all. All the work is on our side of that fence in that picture. One section of fence gets removed and everything's behind that fence.
They could take the fence down if they want. I mean, it's their fence.
Stop it. Just stop.
Tell him.
Just stop. Okay? And I'll stop, and that'll be the end of it.
Perfect.
Is anybody trying to cancel the walk again? No? Karen?
Um, no. I mean, it's unfortunate that Holly has to go. It's the most, most loving for hollies. It's a nice tree, but whoever, they have the right to, um, they have the right to take it down.
Um, somebody?
I'm not.
Do, do you want to, so if they call a comment, I know we have some people online who'd love to make any comments, just raise your hand, or hit star nine through our phone, and we'll take a couple comments this time. I don't see anything.
I'm sure I do not buy the full dress decision because eyes is not hectic. Understand?
If, if I can. I know in the letter it basically said we were going to request an extension. The only thing that I would add to the chair, if you need more time to write a decision than what we have now, we don't have a problem if you need a little more time to do that. It would be nice to get the vote because then we can move towards the stormwater permit. And I think that that's really going to take some of Ben's concerns in, uh, as well as Steve's. Uh, I'm, I'm not going to go through the list that I had of the comments that everybody made because I think they're really been addressed already, that you are going to get a stormwater permit for the new house. And that will, the water from the back half of the driveway goes onto that other wall. So that's why we want to take care of the stormwater.
I do want, yes.
I, I don't recommend that you vote on this tonight.
I don't.
Because we, this is not how you operate. This is how you review the whole draft decision at the one time, so that you have all the conditions with, for the permit.
Okay?
So you're willing to go forward with continuing?
We get a consensus from the board so we can start to work on the stormwater permit?
Yes.
That we've met the common driveway portion and it's a technicality for you to get the decision ready. So we'd like to keep the horns moving forward if we can.
All right.
Not moved on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You okay?
Does it really matter?
Well, to me, it does. It does. I mean, I think we need it and we're helping the horns, and it's a good bylaw.
Shall we go with all this, Stephen? Um, you have a question to continue with, please?
Um, we have, we would like to continue to April 14th at 7:45 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
On paper.
Very much.
I want any two signed. We love you, Karen.
Thank you.
Discussion now at 7:30. Is there any other people?
Over.
In Curtis Estates, not yet? I think you might want to give one to the time, I don't know.
All right, hold on, hold on a second.
Yeah, I'm trying again.
Trying again.
I don't know, any of the homeowners?
Good evening, Jed Hannan with Atlantic Coast Engineering.
Are you having any of the homeowners? Are any of the homeowners going to be present for your meeting list tonight?
They should be on the Zoom. They, they were planning to.
Maybe we should wait a few minutes. If you were waiting until 7:30, maybe they haven't arrived yet, so.
We'll do a little housekeeping and we'll get back to you at 7:30.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. A few minutes and, um, all right.
Hey, I move to approve the requisition of $472.50 to Chestache Consultant for peer review on stormwater of three copper and for $548 for Chestache Consultant for peer review services. 533 Countryway.
All favor.
Five. Sorry. Move to approve the minute, the meeting minutes from February 24, 2022, and March 16, 2022.
March 10.
10, sorry.
And sorry, I wrote it in 2022. It's okay.
Second.
All favor.
I.
Okay, well, I see Mr. Fagone is, I believe he's one of the homeowners.
Do you want to talk about town meetings, stuff?
Yeah, sure.
First, I mean, so that, not, I mean, then we can wait till all the, whoever's coming up. So do you want to have the PowerPoint ready for town meeting?
Yes.
Do you want to have pictures of the lot shape?
Yes, yes.
For a town meeting as well? So then the, uh... Andy, you're going to read the reports for 440.5 and the lot shapes. And Patty will do the reports for the marijuana.
And now who's going to do?
Well, Bob's going to do.
Bob's going to do his own thing, so.
Okay.
And do you want to read, or somebody else want to read the report on the section 800?
I'll do that.
Okay.
If anyone.
Can we take that out of order? Should we ask to me? To do it after, um...
I believe it's in the warrant before the marijuana.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, but it's already in the warrant like that, so. Um, so the moderator's meeting is the 7th, April 7th at 2 PM, which I'll be attending, you know, and we'll review the whole procedures, et cetera, for town meeting. Is there anything else the board wants us to redo? I mean, that you need for, from us? So we have to update the PowerPoint and make sure it corresponds? And is there anything else that you want for town meeting? We will be posting for 6:30, town meeting day. We'll probably post, we'll post for the 10th, for the 11th and the 12th, just in case it goes two nights. We want to be posting well in advance. So, um, is there any other?
I would prefer that there be no handouts. I just think that would confuse people.
I don't want to do a handout.
No, no.
I mean, if you do the PowerPoint, everything, everything, your verbiage is all in the warrant.
Yeah.
But just in case we need backup for the PowerPoint and the others there.
And I, we don't play to use the PowerPoint unless we need it, correct?
Right, that's correct.
It will be.
Yeah. And one of the things that has made a little concern, one of the articles in marijuana is the funding. And the, and the problem that I want to speak to, want to select people, that it wasn't indicated where that money was supposed to go. And that article has nothing to do with the money goes.
That's correct.
And I just don't understand.
That, that's correct, it goes to the general fund.
Right, well, how that could be so misinterpreted.
Well, I don't know either, but I don't think that's a discussion for tonight.
I understand, but I just find it interesting.
Well, I find it interesting that you advise you want to go to nice, with the beer, but you might want to get such, so it's something you don't want to have. So it's just, the whole thing is.
All right, so.
Show me the money, that's it.
So then we'll, we'll just make those changes and have them ready for town meeting, because there is no other meeting between now and town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Probably close enough to 7:30.
All right, shall we begin?
Yeah.
For discussion, Curtis Estates pools, 12 Carriage House Way and 5 Cold Brook Circle.
So Mr. Hannah will be there.
He's coming.
Good evening, Ward. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, Karen.
Okay, excellent. So just to introduce the, kind of the background of what's going on here at Curtis Estates, now we can, it's okay with you, we can, we can then dig into the plans and talk about particulars and hopefully have a positive, forward progress discussion. So Curtis Estates was, as you're probably well aware, it was designed and permitted back in 2018. It's a subdivision. A lot of the lots are very close to the max lot coverage percentage. The, the two families we're representing as professional engineers and surveyors is, is 5 Cold Brook Circle, which is the Fagones, and 12 Carriage House Way, which is the Lanes. There's an O and M associated with the subdivision plan that was approved. And it has particular language relative to pools in, in the back of it. And it, it speaks to the allowance for pools. However, if, if pools are to be allowed, the planning board needs to approve it and mitigation needs to be implemented and agreed to in order to offset the additional impervious surface associated with proposed pools or any, really any additional impervious surfaces. But in this case, it's, it's pools because both families would like to put in pools. If we could first talk about 5 Cold Brook Circle. Do I want to share my screen or do you guys have that planned in front of you?
Have it, thank you.
You have it, okay. So I'm just going to pull it up on my screen, so I have it. Okay, so 5 Cold Brook Circle is very much at the max percentage in terms of lot coverage. The family that lives there, the Fagones, you know, they're, they're not engineers or surveyors or real estate attorneys. They bought the home not really knowing all the restrictions associated with it. And so, you know, they, the owner, Sarah, she, she appeared before you folks several months ago and was given some information on what the restrictions are. She reached out to us, and so here we are, you know, representing them. What, what, what they would like to do is put in a proposed pool, 15 foot by 32 foot. We realize that that would put them further over the lot coverage percentage. What we're proposing to offset not only the proposed pool footprint, but well above that is to put in, as detailed on our plan, roof drain infiltrators, which would capture all the roof runoff from the existing structure, the existing single-family dwelling, which is approximately 2,300 square feet. There'd be gutter trays and downspouts that discharge down into a stone leaching pit five feet below grade, well below the frost level. And this, this would, this runoff, stormwater runoff would percolate into the existing soils. We, we looked at the soil characteristics associated with the property from the original permits and it perks fine. It's a significant amount of runoff, but we broke it up into, we're proposing to break it up into four different stone leaching pits. And it will perk just fine. So if the planning board's amenable to it, this is the plan we'd like to go with. And we can, we can certainly provide, if you want to condition it such that we could provide an as-built upon completion and, you know, verification of, of perk test results associated with this proposed design. So that's the, that's what we're proposing at 5 Cold Brook Circle. Before we move on to 12 Carriage House Way, I guess I'd open it up to any questions you might have or comments or concerns. Thank you.
Yes, well, I believe I did email you that we want to see the drainage data. We want to see the data and we want to see the perk test, that you could actually infiltrate the water, as you say. We want to see proof of that. You know, I talked to a member of the board who's not here tonight, and he absolutely wants that data before he was, before he's willing to further discuss this. What type of pavement is going to be around the pool? That there's, the permeable pavers that were, that are in the driveway with a specific section that was based on the soils out at that project. And so all that has to be considered. Plus, your plan differs from the as-built plan in where the permeable pavers in the driveway actually are. I don't think you got back to me on that issue.
Right, I did see your comment. These are the numbers that, that we have in terms of square footages. Between now and the next meeting, we can, we could definitely verify, double-check what we have versus the as-built that was done upon construction completion and prior issuance of the certificate, of the certificate of occupancy. So we can, we could definitely double-check those, those numbers. I know it, it doesn't deviate significantly from those numbers, but they do, they do differ. So we will double-check that. And if you, you folks are requiring some stormwater calcs to verify what we're proposing, that's not a problem, we can do that.
And what's the surface around the pool? There's usually a surface around a pool.
Right, we haven't really, the homeowners and I haven't really decided on that. I, I would think that the board is probably going to take the position that, you know, you, you want some sort of pervious materials. So we, we kind of purposely left it as shown so that we could have a discussion about that.
All right, I think that if you come up with what's necessary in terms of the drainage calfs, et cetera, et cetera, at that time, we can discuss impervious favors around the pool at that time. How long is it going to take you to get this information to us?
Uh, we could do it within a couple of weeks, probably, hopefully prior to the next, should be able to get it to you prior to the next planning board meeting.
Any further comments?
No, like Karen kind of brought up, I was going to ask, which is that, is the proposed area the 32 by 15? Is that the entire hardscape area or is that the actual pool area? But we already covered it.
That's the pool, that's the pool.
I do think that whatever they're proposing for pavement around the pool is, is an important issue that, you know, has to be shown and has to be accounted for in drainage calculations too. So I, very not to push that too far down, down the pipe.
Right, so I guess that changes. We want, and your homework, your homework, figure out what you want to put around the pool and how that affects your drainage.
I just, um, one comment on that, just one thing that we had discussed.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm Sarah Fagone, the homeowner at 5 Cold Brook Circle. Is that we were definitely open to, like, altering the size of the pool if necessary. So I guess whatever the calculations come back with, we can see like kind of what size that accommodates. And then if we need to shrink the pool itself to make the hardscape fit under that, then, I mean, that's something that we were kind of thinking from our standpoint.
I mean, because the pool is impervious surface too. That all has to be figured into the calculations.
Right.
Absolutely.
Let me ask a question, Ms. Fagone. I was told you never received an O and M manual, was that true?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Did you, you never received your O and M manual when you moved in?
No, we were never given that, ever.
Do you have it now?
I, I mean, yeah, we got it after the fact because of this process, but the builder never gave it to us.
Yeah, I actually, so this is Errol Fagone, Sarah's husband from 5 Cold Brook Circle. We received it from Karen through email, once we started this process, which was well after us buying the house.
Okay.
And I, I think that's pretty much standard for everyone in the neighborhood, I'm fairly certain.
Really unfortunate. Yeah.
All right, Karen, how are we reading this, please?
Well, I think Mr. Hannah knows what information he needs to supply. I, at this point, the board is going to, the board probably wants to have it peer reviewed too. I mean, and we don't have funds, we don't have funds for it to be peer reviewed. I'm not taking it out of the subdivision funds because that's a different, that's a different animal. So, you know, somebody's going to have to front some money to have the drainage calculations peer reviewed.
Do you know, do we know, like, how much that costs?
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have what you're proposing to do. When, once you give me what's supposed to be done, that's what I send out to a peer review engineer to get an estimate.
Oh, to do the peer review?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Again, Jed Hannan with Atlantic Coast Engineering. Understood on all the questions and concerns and what you're looking for particul, for particulars. Let me, let me review the timeline and when we get, get that back to you. And I can definitely email you, Karen, if that's, that sounds amenable.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we point out that this is not a step to approval, this is a step, this is a step to review, this is a step to review, not necessarily for approval, okay?
Understood, understood.
We're open to discussion.
Sure, okay, thank you, and then if we could talk about twelve Carriage House Way. So it's a little bit of a, it's similar scenario, but a little bit different, if I could explain that, whenever you're ready.
Oh, fine.
Okay, great, thank you. So, okay, twelve Carriage House Way. It does not have as much lot coverage percentage. It's, it's twenty six percent lot coverage. In thirties, the max, so there's approximately. From a lot coverage percentage standpoint, there's approximately six hundred sixteen square feet. Of of available impervious surface. That that could be. Utilized or or added. The lot size is fifteen thousand four hundred eight square feet, and they just did four percent of that. What what the family here is proposing, let me just zoom in. And I I did speak to Bob Vogel about the the proposed deck. What they'd like to do is an above-ground pool. That that rests on compacted. Pervious three-quarter inch stone, and then it basically a deck that surrounds the above-ground pool. And the the deck would be. Excuse me, thirty seven foot by twenty six foot. Bob stated that there is no. Limitations on the deck size, however, you know, it'd be courteous to to a butters to make sure they're okay with with the size and to make it. You know, as as minimally invasive as possible, so he didn't have a problem with what we're proposing here in terms of the deck. And the regulations associated with the with the above-ground pool. So this proposed pool is what the family would like to do is twelve by twenty four. Again, they, they're not quite at the lot max percentage as the Fagones, their their neighbors in this cul-de-sac. However, the the owners are willing to. Do some impervious pavers or other such mitigation. But if the if the board's amenable to what we have shown here on the layout plan, because they're four percent. Lower than the max lot coverage percentage. That would be preferable, but they're, they want to work with the board, again, they're they're in a similar situation as the Fagones where. They weren't aware of these restrictions and, you know, it's a it's a nice neighborhood. So.
Do you want to say something, Karen, I wonder if the conditions for here we do not allow above-ground pools, where, is that, this subdivision, I I read that somewhere recently.
Um, well, I gave you a copy of what the O and M plan, I didn't read the, I did not go back and read the covenants for this.
I I know, it tells me it says.
I think you need to read the covenants to see if an above-ground pool is even allowed.
And I think that they are not allowed by your covenant, I I know I read that, it's not in the O and M, that talks about the ground pools, but I think in your covenant here, HOA, it says something about no above-ground pools.
I think that we also.
And you're saying that's in the covenants?
Well. I'll add to the, um, there was agreements that were made for this project because it's a flexible open space subdivision, and it has a whole bunch of. The HOA and it has some other covenants associated with it. Hopefully, the owners were provided with the covenants for the development.
I I can't speak to that. I know.
But I'm pretty sure that there are no above-ground pools in the covenants.
I didn't, I I didn't see that in the. In the O and M or.
It's not in the O and M.
Or the covenants, but we can, we can certainly go back and and review that and, so so you're you're certain you saw it in the covenants?
No, I just remember reading it somewhere, is here, I'll move it back to you, I'll find it.
I haven't disagreed with you on the impervious surface.
Okay.
The as, the as-built that we received said the allowable impervious area is four one two eight square feet. And the as-built impervious area is three eight one eight square feet, that only leaves three hundred and ten square feet of impervious area. Left for development, not, not anywhere near six hundred square feet.
Understood, and I I recall you sending that email, again, these are the numbers that we calculated, my surveyor calculated. We're only proposing two hundred eighty-eight square feet, which is is still under the the as-built that you have. In terms of, you know, percentage, lot lot coverage percentage. We're not, we're not proposing anything above and beyond what, even with that as-built that that shows a lower quantity.
All right, so where do we go from here, Karen?
Well, I think they have to go back and review all the documents for the development to see if above-ground pools are allowed. There's only three hundred and ten square feet available, should the board choose to allow them to do this three hundred. And I would certainly not recommend that the driveway be cut up and put with pervious pavers. That was done as a, as a desperation situation because Lot Five was built too big.
Yeah.
I mean, the board was reluctant to do that, but you were backed into a corner, and that was the only way to to resolve, to resolve it. It's always just about too big.
Yes. So, you have some work out, okay, Sarah. And who do we have?
Hi, Kristen Lane and Doug Lane here.
Hello.
Hello. We've been longtime residents of Situate, we're we're learning so many new things tonight, thank you. May I ask a question about the covenants in the HOA, we don't have a copy of those, Sarah Fagoni is nice enough to look it up for us, so we can take a look at what's in the covenants related to above-ground pools. But my question would be, is there, if there is a covenant in the HOA about above-ground pools. Once our HOA association takes over, I guess, ownership or stewardship of the development. Would it then be a matter of getting approval from our neighbors to insert an above-ground pool so long as it fits within the specifications that the town will allow?
I don't remember what this one says about changes.
Okay, so we'd have to pick.
It's it's different.
I see, okay.
Changeable, you could amend.
You could amend.
You could amend, it's, you can change and you can amend now.
Okay.
Where the impervious surface for this development is the impervious surface for this development. The development is not complete, the development has not been signed off of, the road, the road, the road still is not complete and not signed off on.
The 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 finishes that have to happen to complete the neighborhood with the sidewalks and the the.
Everything, yeah.
Trust us, we all want that to happen soon too.
So it doesn't matter from this point to you, what you decide, that impervious pavement never changes, that that, that above stays the same, right, you can't change that. So.
Understood, okay.
But we could probably change the above-ground pool restriction. Or amend it.
Amen.
Yeah, because I don't think anyone in the neighborhood would mind.
Thank you, Errol. That's because they want to send their kids over here to swim, I think, before they get there.
Exactly, we, we just need one, we just want one pool in the neighborhood.
One pool, we'll build a community pool in the middle of the circle.
I think what you need to do is have the developer pay in perpetuity for the nice Columbus pool.
We'll try to shake and bounty, and I don't know how that'll work out for us, so.
Good luck getting him to pay for anything.
Just for clarification, the deed does reference the homeowners association trust. And it tells you where it's recorded, book and page, and it also says the declaration of easements, where that's recorded, and declaration of covenants and restrictions, where that's recorded, that's all in your deed.
Okay. Thank you.
Which, yeah, which which should have been either electronically or or hard copy given to you at closing, but.
Right, I agree, but it is mentioned in the deed. So you should be able to, you should be able to find it.
Okay, so.
Please let us know.
Understood, thank you, so I guess the takeaway then on on twelve Carriage House Way is we'll, we'll review the covenants. And and, you know, recheck our, our square footage in terms of lot coverage percentage and and come back with. You know, obviously, some answers that we can further discuss this to hopefully, you know, come to some kind of an agreement.
Mr. Bedrock, hang on one second, please.
Sorry, sure.
I just want to comment, I just text both of the two developers, neither of them know if the covenants say you can't, can't have a pool.
Thank you, thank you.
I I'm sorry, can you just clarify, did they say they don't know?
They don't know.
They don't know.
Okay.
So you have a.
We'll go through with the five.
I was trying to help you tonight and get the answer from them, but one's in Florida, the one's in New Hampshire, but they can't remember.
I can't, I I read it someplace too, I'm pretty sure it's here, so we'll check, we'll check, we'll check.
Okay, we'll dig into it, thank you for your time, any other questions at this point?
No, just get your eyes jotted and your teeth frosted.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
And thank you, remember to be, be, not in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, do you have the people here for the former Elm Street? That's not a couple, Karen, can we, or four, two seconds, all right. Mr. Morse, you go on again.
Evening, Frederick Morse, registered engineer Morse Engineering, representing the property owners, Mark Richardson, who's with us in the audience tonight. As well as Robert Christina Koenighand, the property itself is located on Elm Street, move this number ninety-three. Elm Street being the existing home here, one oh nine Elm Street, located here, Elm Street is a town-accepted public road, it is paved as utilities. Electric. Services. The proposal here is to take the existing properties and redivide them into six individual lots, all of the lots comply with frontage requirements. Area requirements, this is in the R two zoning district, therefore requiring one hundred feet of frontage for a lot, twenty thousand square feet of land area. The wetlands out here have been reviewed and approved by the conservation commission. Lot two and lot six, as you'll see on the plan, are fifty-foot frontage lots, which are allowed per the zoning bylaw, as long as they have twice the land area. They both comply with that requirement, they both got unanimous approval from the zoning board of appeals last week, as fifty-foot frontage lots. The plan is entitled to endorsement, this meets all the requirements, I turn it over to you.
Karen. And it's entitled to endorsement. I have questions for one, the lots, the lots together, so maybe so. Need mine? I got it. I hope to endorse this approval not required, a plan entitled plan of Land Ninety-three and One Oh Nine Elm Street, assesses clock of forty-four dash two dash eighteen and forty-four dash two dash seventeen. Situate, Mass, prepared by Morse Engineering Company, aim for applicants slash owners, Mark Robertson and Rob and Christina Koenighand, dated February seventh, twenty twenty-two. With provisions through March twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, as the division of land shown on the company plan is not a subdivision. Because every lot shown on the plan has frontage at least the distance presently required under the zoning, situational bylaw on the public way of Elm Street. The planning board stamp added that planning board endorsement of the plan is not a determination as to performance with zoning regulations. Is there a second? Further comment? All in favor? One eye. Now we have. Four forty-three. Four forty-three. To four sixty-one. Chief Justice Cushing, say, I would rest up Karen, because just before that it says no. Yeah, so, you know, that's what happens. And who is here to represent Chief Justice of a town?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Rafferty.
Yes.
A member of Time Barn.
Yep.
And and we came by the town's, the, the owner's project manager. Plan of construction of a new water treatment. Twenty twenty, which put paid money. By the ten lots of Chief Justice Cushing Highway. With the expectation that it'll be for town purposes and. Likely to be used for a water treatment plant. The plan before you tonight is merely at this time to consolidate all the lots into one loss of probably three years. Whatever towns to use it for. The wetlands are shown on the plan you have, we had a slight pickup on Monday night, we were on the agenda. Concom Monday night. One of the butters on the side street up there felt that they had not been notified and should have been notified, so we heard on Monday that. Concom preferred to defer to their next meeting. To make sure the everybody's probably know, but we got a certified butters list, bullet down. Concom said that we're going to go back and we'll check that list, so we'll use this to, really be known for. Mark pleases. And just wait for you to make your decision about that. Permit from Concom, I would say that Concom's, something has been out there, but it's, it's free, there is a period.
I've got one thing that's been a self-confused this.
Well, well, the ones are required to be shown on an A and R plan.
Are they there?
They they have shown the wetlands on the A and R plan. As with other large lots, you have let. You have let it go if there's plenty of lot area, it's in the process of being done, and. They do show the wetlands on the plan, but they don't actually have the physical determination yet from the conservation. But there's plenty of upland lot area for this development, is they're consolidating it all to one big parcel?
One big lot.
Let me ask a question, so if we consolidate all this, and it doesn't pass TOWE, does it stay all consolidated? Yes.
That's, that, the intent is to consolidate it so it's a single lot for the town's purpose.
And I wanted it to go to CPC. Oh, wow. And do you want a water trip, okay, desperately? I know. Any comment from the board? Paul?
No, no comment.
Karen, anything for other?
I expect to be back in front of you at some point, many months from now.
Yes, I would expect that you will be here. More than once, more than once. All right, I hope to endorse this approval not required, a plan entitled approval not required, four forty-three through four sixty-one, Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Mass. Prepared by Feldman Geo-Spatial applicant Sean Anderson of Situate Water Department, and our town of Situate, dated February twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, and with provisions through three twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, as the division of land shown on the company plan. Is not a subdivision, because every lot shown on the plan has frontage at least the distance presently required under the situational bylaw on the public way of Chief Justice Cushing Highway. With the planning board stamp added that the planning board endorsement of the plan is not a determination as to the performance with zone regulations. The planning board weighs the fee for the application as it is for the town. Is there a second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you for your help.
So you're asking is a public hearing at 8:30, so, oh goodness.
No, we still have, we still have reports and other stuff to do before then, so.
All right, does anybody have a layoff? Is there one? Yes. Anybody?
I thought you saw, I know you don't, but I'll go, if you're interested. I think to vote. For our vote, I was in the board selection. I really feel like they didn't understand what we're doing and getting here to understand what we're doing. And that's my statement.
We need to, I was at CPC to talk about the Morton Kindergarten property. Because the applicant has come back in looking for $400,000 more. Which is a 1.3 million. And it was decided since it was appraised and in excess of 1.5 or 1.7 million. That it was within range type of thing. So it's going to town to the land, the 11th century.
To have the additional funds?
Yes, we already done that.
Yeah, sorry.
Also, it's not eight hundred, well, okay, yeah, it's only four. Oh, there's four. Oh my. Small kids. Um, traffic rules was canceled. And I don't want anything else. Okay. Karen.
All right, so um, I think the board should be making a decision in the next few meetings whether to, well, keep doing hybrid with both Zoom and in-person or all in-person. Technically, you can go to, I think July 15th, you can have both. So at some point, you're going to be faced with that decision.
I I like the hybrid, why so?
So we'll keep going for hybrid as long as we can, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, what we're doing.
So everything to come.
Yeah, we started this and um. See, it's already, yeah, we should see it. And actually, I think we do a tremendous job, far better than most, but we have shared a thing for that.
Yep.
Because it weren't for her.
We're not a good board.
So.
She asked how she wants to vote on it.
All right, so then Seth McDonald Terrace has started the building, the old house is down, the the erosion control is in, the construction fencing is up. Mr. Berwick sent in a request to change the tree box filter to a storm scepter. Because he understands we don't like tree box filters. I had it peer reviewed and the consulting engineer believes it's sized appropriately. Et cetera, so if the board agrees, I will just write insignificant change for that.
I, were they crediting? This is where it's like kind of a gray area of these P M Ps, was the tree also considered in that landscape design? If so, if so, I would request that they add a tree and.
I'll look at, I don't, I'll I'll look, I don't think so, but I will look, I mean, they have a landscape design that you approved.
Right, right.
So. I I will look. I I don't think we would have counted that, but. 18, 4, we're going out this week to look at the Asbilt. On on that, I think, I think Mr. McGill wants to have occupancy next week, but we're not even getting out to look at the Asbilt till Tuesday. So. I drove down to Toberlin today, didn't see any salty water leaving the site. So that's, that's good thing. I didn't see any salty water leaving any of our sites today, I did, I did run around and checked on multiple projects to make sure no salty water was leaving the site. The Vine Bar now wants to have outdoor seating. The Vine Bar, the one that was at 130, 131 Front Street, you approved the site plan review and it was broken up into two spaces, the Vine Bar and the Juice Bar. And I believe they both want to have outdoor seating, but.
Where?
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 Um.
It's a parking.
Right by the, right by the, one of the gas tanks.
In between, I believe the Vine Bar wants it in between the fencing and the the door on that side, which is also a hand, I mean, that's their handicap access in there. So I indicated that I would ask the board what they thought. Under zoning bylaw 760.8, outdoor dining is exempt from parking requirements, so parking is not.
The issue.
The issue. But you did write in the site plan review that no outdoor seating was allowed, so. How would you like to handle that?
If that's what we said. And if it's that small a space, it could be a public safety issue.
So you would like to, do you want me to get them a plan and have them come in next time, or how would you like to handle that?
Have they even opened?
No, no, because it takes, it takes some, it takes some time to fit it up, I mean, they only got from the time of site plan program, then they had to get their building permit and they're still, they're still in the fit-up stage. Believe that they indicate to be opened by the end. I think that holds you back in this.
I like, I mean, I like the idea of outdoor seating, I think it's good for the harbor. However, if they, you know, if we did have that, if that was in a decision that no outdoor seating must be allowed with the information we had in making the decision. Then I think the fact that they're even in operations yet, I think I need to see more information about the amend that before they even open, or when they're open and everything's great and want to add seating, then I'm happy to have them come in and talk to us about it, I'm not. I'm not against it at all.
No, it's, my point is, it it's in that area where the handicap accessible issue is.
Right. Yeah, you've heard my dad, he ever pushed a double jogging stroll through the harbor, I've had to go on the road before, because of stuff.
So there there's an issue here.
Right.
And is this in sort of in back of the building? Next to?
Right, if it's on the side, it would be on the side of the building.
By the gas station.
By the gas station, there's a fence, there's a fence, then there's a space, and then there's the building.
It's like an alleyway.
So.
Yeah.
So I will ask them to provide a plan and you want them to come in and talk to you.
Sure. I want to talk to them.
So. Till the meeting on the 28th. That he needs to be away at some point in April and he was gonna let us know.
Okay.
Right. All right, let's go to 48 New Drive Way. As you recall, this is the gas station.
Yes.
And the gas station has a public amenities space in front of the building. It has it has pretty much an eight-foot pervious sidewalk and then the courtyard, the eating courtyard was pervious pavement as well. And part of this was, you know, so that it would be an engaging space with the public. They would like to change the material of the of the public amenities, they would like to change that from pervious sidewalk to concrete sidewalk. It's been opined that pervious concrete does not do well in the Northeast. So I asked the, I asked our consulting engineer to look at it. And the consulting engineer thought that there may be other options such as pavers that would be town requirements be more durable. He he estimates that they would meet the calculations, so you can have, you're supposed to have 25% pervious in the front yard. And so he estimates they would still meet that calculation. But I think that having a whole concrete sidewalk, you know, going from eight foot to six foot. And then having the whole seating area, you know. Having the whole seating area as concrete is giving a very different appearance than what you approved. I mean, if you remember too, it wasn't just a simple, there was some cutouts, you know, so it's it wasn't just, you know, an eight-foot walk, I mean, this is where you're expecting people to go in the building, get their sandwich, you know, or coffee and be able to sit outside so that you, I mean, along the front and in the, you know, outdoor diving area. To make the space physically, you know, encourage pedestrian activity in this new V C N district.
Is there any possibility of having them break it up as brick?
I have, I haven't asked any questions yet, I just wanted to hear what the board had to say, our consultant thinks that perhaps they could do some type of other paper to make it pervious or, you know.
Because fourth place, a down country way, north situated, it's cement, but there's a piece along the edges that's all brick. And that sort of breaks things up a little bit. Rather than straight cement.
Do you think that this is more of a stormwater issue or more of a public amenities space issue, whereas?
Or is it a design?
Both.
The reason why they gave me that they want to do it is that the concrete does does not last in the Northeast.
And you're probably right.
And so it's merely, you know, they want to have something that's durable, that's going to last.
Right.
And so I have to, you know, I think that
But you, but you said there's also a design change as well, not just a material change, you said those bump outs are changing, isn't it?
The way I see it, the bump outs are changing, I mean, the way I see it, you know, they still have the, they still, they still have the you know, straight connection to the, to the sidewalk, but where there was a regular space in front before, now this is gonna be straight grass, straight grass, straight grass. And so there was more interesting, more interest in the space before.
Yeah, it sounds very austere now, what you're describing, I don't, I don't remember the apartment like that. I remember a red brick or a landscape plan showing something in there, not just a grasshopper with a concrete sidewalk. So I don't, maybe I haven't remembered correctly.
Okay, can I ask, oh, we look at the side of the building on the front of the building, we look at the driveway side or the right side?
Front of the building, the front of the building.
So the street side.
The street side, the street side, where you're, you're trying to encourage pedestrian.
I would not want to do that concrete, I think that would be rich, austere, I think that that's.
I mean, that's what, I mean, maybe there's like one entrance on the street side, but then on the driveway side, there's an entry.
There's two. No, there's, there's two entrances, there's two entrances on the street side, there's the one to the actual convenience store, and this one to the restaurant.
And then I, I was under, understanding that that it was going to be, you know, so on the street side, it was going to be street sidewalk. And then the two entrances, but then the, it was one or six or eight foot strip of landscaping, we're talking about.
Right, there is, there's still gonna be, there's still gonna be landscaping, it's gonna be landscaping and grass.
So what, where are they talking about the pervious, or pervious concrete, or replacing that?
Is there a plan that you want me to put on the street?
Um, it's, it's in the.
That's what get the.
I'm just confused as to what I'm working on.
This is the front of the gas station, okay, this was all approved as pervious pervious sidewalk, and this is the sidewalk out at the roadway.
Yeah.
So this was a little bit of a regular shape, okay, and then we went into here. I, they want to, they want to make this a straight line, straight line, you know, and and more grass or.
That's what I remember, that's what we we know.
Yeah, so that's actually what they're trying to go with in this group match, I think.
Well, no, there's plenty in here too, there's plenty, there's. So.
But instead of adding outdoor area with pervious concrete, like a it's just gonna be the entrances. So they're removing, they're actually removing concrete and their.
For, yeah. I would say for me, as long as they're meeting their stormwater requirements, from an aesthetic point of view. Most people won't tell the difference between pervy, pervious concrete and regular concrete, so that's immaterial to me, as long as it meets the stormwater requirements. But if they're making fundamental design changes to the layout and the landscape plan, I think that's a different, a different.
So aren't they, are they just removing the pervious concrete and they're just letting it be landscaped?
No, they're not, real concrete.
They want to put real concrete and we still, there's, there still will be landscaping, yes, in the area, but they want to go from pervious pavement to concrete pavement.
Sounds like a pot for stormwater.
Yeah.
So do you have any interest in asking if they want breaking it up somehow?
I think a band of work would be welcome. It's in keeping with what's going on in the entire village. I'm going down to one place, country way.
I mean, I'll ask, I mean, I do, I do know that they are trying to get occupancy and open this gas station sometime on the street. So, okay, I will, I'll discuss that with them. And that's all I have for.
So Karen, I, I received several phone calls about occupancy in Milton, so that post-tripped in Milton, they probably got to us, right? Complaints.
Occupancy goes to the, the building department. With the new permit I software, if planning board needs to sign off on the occupancy, the planning board should be signing off before the building department signs off. That has not always been happened.
So I've had two, two places in town that I've had repeated concerns of people have called me, that there are too many people in Milton. And so when you have to go, you have to get the C S, so. All right, we'll talk to them.
I think that's a building commissioner issue, I can take that to.
I can take that to.
Yeah, I can take that up with the building commissioner.
Okay, and I, I told them to do that, just want to make sure people understood that, that's not our job, that would force that.
No.
People want to relax, because that's not our job.
My job. Yes, sir?
Steve's got a question.
Yes, Mr. Jordan.
Before you guys move on to the next here, just quickly, on, on Mr. Berwick project where he's going from a tree box to downstream defender basically, you gotta make sure that he changes the O and M plan to improve.
I have, I have written, I have written an email to him asking them for a new O and M plan.
And we just want to make sure, this is definitely different than making this.
Right, I have asked for an O and M plan to be provided, the new one to be provided. And that would be right in the letter for insignificant change, it provided, the O and M is provided.
You're leaving us, you.
You're leaving us, you
I'm only, I'm only going to
You're gonna stay?
You're gonna stay? And you wanna take a ten minute break? So someone is making a motion.
Yes, yes, yes. It's, oh, it's public.
It's a public hearing. We have to leave.
I, I know you said, well, we take a ten minute break.
Second.
All in favor?
I All right, can you mute us, please? Are we off?
No, we have to mute you.
I thought it was like just entered to
Ms. Bourbon, you'd like
I'm leaving. I want to take a moment to conduct a meeting. Somebody say so.
Second, go ahead.
We're back. Say second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. So who do we have here this evening?
So for the record, my name is Walter Solomon. I'm a gift journey to the applicant with Muse Frank Pollak. And our project architect, Phil Tebow.
All right, so some new ideas, I'd say.
We do, and I think Frank's gonna summarize, and then we have, um, some, uh, some predictions we'd like to put up in the board and, and take the, the board through. So do you want to summarize where we're at, Frank?
Well, I think we listened to the comments over the next like four, a certain period of time. And took it to heart and tried to, uh, actually with a new design for a building. But beyond that, I felt challenged to be able to get connection on this lot. Aside from what the building is, to be able, it's so prominent, it's situated, that I felt that the property had to connect from the rotary to the other end of the lot. And I think we tried to accomplish that with landscape, when he hired a, bought a Pinsky professional landscape architect. And he's, uh, he's come up with this design. Uh, the design incorporates flowering trees on the rotary side, so it will be flowering all the time during the seasons. We have just gotten some, uh, comments back from review engineers on the, uh, environmental and conservation. And so we're gonna incorporate designated plantings along the brick that are gonna add to the betterment of the brick, if you will. But I think that this plan, I think he was able to tie the lot together in a pretty well-done way, if you will. Rather than just green space, we have flowering space, so it's, it's in a live, I would, uh, landscape.
So.
Would, would it make sense to have the architects sort of bring it through where we're at? Yeah, that's okay. Thank you, Phil.
Yes, please, please, please.
Good evening again. For the record, uh, my name is Philip Tebow from Philip Tebow Architects. Project, as you're well aware, it's gone through a number of iterations and we were in part of the architecture, the board for, for meetings. And a number of meetings, I believe there was a, a combined cons, cons comm and training board, I believe. I know there was a joint meeting that we had, and there were some comments taken there about the size of the building, the, the shape. In particular, uh, there was, you know, serious questions about, um, the roof configuration, so. This is one iteration, if you want, where it still maintained the flat roof, but we had taken out a floor and rearranged the, uh, the units to, to help try to decrease the size of the building. Uh, predominantly, it still stays, stays on the same footprint, seventy foot by one hundred foot footprint. So we're still within the boundaries there. There was further discussion amongst people, uh, in, in the project team as well as in situant regarding, again, some of the architecture of, of a flat roof as opposed to a gable roof. So we did come up with a plan that would provide for a gable roof. Predominantly, again, it's the same footprint, same number of units. Uh, but this throws a, 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 a traditional gable roof on the building, which is, uh, very prevalent within, within the situant. So we, we've done texturing with, with some of the plywood material. We have some shapes, we have clavors. Uh, we provide, um, window spacing and, and punctuate some windows with, with shutters to try to keep it within the vernacular, um, situation. This, this plan, uh, meets the zoning requirements, uh, where from the average grade plane to, in the case of a gable roof, to the mean slope, so to the, essentially the middle of a gable roof, that distance is forty feet. Uh, so we have, and I, I think it's been corrected in your, in your past with that. First through second, second to third, and third to, to won't be the fourth floor or the roof floor. Uh, is nine foot four inches floor to floor. And then the, the slope of the roof and the slope is, um, what is it, eight, eight and twelve pitch. Uh, so it's a, it's a, it's a nice, comfortable pitch. Um, that provides a, a forty foot building height. And I believe the building, the building commissioner has taken a look at it, and I believe he's encouraged it. That's, that's predominantly it. We, we've gone through a number of changes. We have listened to, um, uh, everybody, uh, that we were talking to in situant. I, I hope we interpreted what they, what their concerns were. Because of us, what we're doing is some, is some of the interpretation of, um, comments that we're getting from the town and also from the, the building team, uh, the, the project team. We certainly want to, we want them to melt because this really is, this is a great, a design partnership between the town and the project. That, that, that has always been my, my point of view, so. Everybody needs to come out of this looking, looking good. But I hope, um, we're, we're near the mark, uh, but, uh, I will, I'll let Walter continue. Unless you have questions immediately.
So you proposing this plan, not this one exactly?
I believe we're
Or is, or is that?
So both, hon, honestly, both, both are complying.
Okay.
So, um, for the flat roof, the flat roof itself is, is, is at thirty-five feet, which is under the forty, and then the penthouse, um, is, is an additive height, if, if, if the ten feet for the, the, uh, penthouse. Uh, so both plans work. I, I suppose we're here to, to try and get a sense of, um, how, how the board feels about one or, one of the two designs.
Well, I, I don't understand that. I mean, the penthouse is supposed to be visible. So how does the penthouse, how, the penthouse is visible in the flat roof scenario, so how does that meet the requirement? I thought you took it down. Did you take it? I thought you said you took it. Or
We've taken, we've taken a floor out and we've, we've, um, we redesigned the floor plan. So we've, we've incorporated some of the units that were in, the floor that was removed in, in the simulation back into the plan. So there are, there are nineteen units total within this, that we, this plan. Five on the first floor, six on both the second and third floor, and then, then within the roof level, there are two units.
I don't think the flat, I don't think the penthouse meets the, because height limits do not apply to penthouse dwelling units as long as they are not visible from any sidewalk on a perimeter property line and meet the design standard U seven fifty point six. This penthouse is, on a flat roof, is still gonna be visible, not on the gable roof design.
Well, then, then
The penthouse, the penthouse won't be
I would defer, we would be over the limits.
You have an answer, Patrick?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So you want us to choose if you want
Well, no, I mean, if, 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 if it's, play to the board that, that their belief is that the flat roof in the penthouse does not apply, then certainly, certainly it's, it's the gable roof. Uh, I know we, um, the team has spoken. My understanding is the team has spoken with the building commissioner, and his understanding is that this
We met with the building, uh, Mr. Pollak, myself, and Bob Vogel met last Friday morning. And, uh, we discussed the plan and we discussed that the flat roof elevation did not meet the requirements, but the gable did as long as it was changed to the forty feet is to the midpoint in the, um, but the gable did, as long as it was changed to the forty feet is to the midpoint in the, um, in the, the ridge, that's, that's what the definition of height is, so they're saying that now it's basically forty feet, so that would be the definition of height.
It can be forty feet, right?
It can be forty feet.
And the forty, the forty feet is measured from the average grade plane.
So what I would have appreciated is something in that gable, that means like this. So your front, which is very pretty, is from, is part of our, like, his, his looking.
Yeah.
What I'm looking at here is, is not specific to anything there, correct?
The footprint will match.
No, I'm just trying to about the roof, right, this, this does not. Oh, that's, that confused me. So I think this is the building they were proposing, it's not.
Yeah.
The footprint is the building there, oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, but not that it's a footprint, though.
But I would, it's not the design.
Right.
Right, at the roof.
The landscape plan only shows the footprint, and not, not the roof.
Yeah. So Karen, you're saying that this picture right here.
Yeah, I, I was saying, like, I've got, I've got some, I was.
Last room is not in compliance, because you can see the penthouse, the penthouse can't be visible.
But even if it's just forty feet?
Penthouse, height limits to, height limits do not apply to penthouse dwellings as long as they are not visible from any sidewalk.
Yeah.
But, I'm, I'm kind of with your, couldn't, couldn't they just go full fourth, like, full fourth floor? Here?
But, but what I'm saying is, in this picture that I'm looking at, I'm looking at wrong, the whole building is only forty feet, or maybe a tiny bit more.
Including that.
Including that house.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we just call it top floor.
But it looks, it looks like it may be a.
I think it is a big forty.
Foot over.
I think it ends up being more than forty feet. But look at that second, this case.
So, so, so at, so we're adding up, because we, the, that flat has ten feet floor to floor. The roof, the flat roof itself is at thirty-three, so the top of the penthouse would be at forty. So, to, to get the penthouses to be in forty feet, I would have to get three feet out of, out of, out of, out of.
Did you tell that, please?
Yeah.
But the footprint has shrunk.
I mean.
How much is the footprint shrunk from the original worry?
Uh, six, six feet. Six feet front to back. Essentially, there were a number of things that had to be adjusted.
Well, and I sent Mr. Pollak today, email from the conservation agent, saying that she, she felt that this building was not, you know, it, the footprint was still too big, and so, Mr. Pollak just gave me an email. I, I don't know who Brad Holmes is, I don't know which consultant he is, your consultant or the conservation.
He's ours.
He's working with the consultant from the conservation commission.
I mean, because I provided the conservation agent with the new, new plan. So I don't know where we are with that right now.
So by way of process, we have to go back to conservation in the next two weeks, so, um, there does seem to be some confusion, um, that the planner helped us out with today, so our consultant is working with the board, the commission peer review consultant. Uh, we hope to have that cleared out this week. Does the usable living space change from the gable design to the flat roof design, or does the interior remain the same, the interior of the building?
The interior layout of the unit.
So the, the, the first, second, well, so garage level, uh, that, that's essentially below grade, but first floor and second and third floor, those plans remain the same. If, if you're changing from a gable roof to the penthouse, that floor level would change. Because with a penthouse design, it gets congregated towards the middle of the footprint.
So we get two units in the gable. So we wind up with the nineteen units. Whereas the other way, the two, the two units beyond the seventeen would be the penthouse units, and they're not acceptable away this time.
Okay.
Very affordable units.
So, we, we understand, we have, we've done the calculations, we have four, four obligation, or four, four, uh, affordable units. Our hope is that, um, we can put, um, one perhaps onsite and three offsite. And I know that the chair has expressed a displeasure with that, but, um, with the constraints of this project, we're hoping that we can convince the board to consider that. Uh, we know where our obligation is, uh, and we will, uh, be affordable units.
And I, I would pass it to guess that I would like to see those beginning construction at about the same time, since we got work the last time.
Yeah, that would not happen, they would go, it would be simultaneous. And before we look for occupancy in the main building, we would occupy the floors.
So is the board opining that it's okay to do offsite affordable units?
No, I know, really, I'm convinced that that's, that's, I, I think that if by Mr.
The spirit of.
The spirit of the bylaw, inclusion by law, and I understand that money is always a constraint, but our job is to, is to protect the citizens, that's what we're elected to do, if hired, what we do is affordable housing. And it's a challenge, as you know.
That's what we do. I apologize, that, well, we didn't, we were asked to present both layouts, so with a good time constraints, we didn't have an opportunity to get a call during the party.
Okay, I just wanted to give that to the, this is a, this is a.
This is, I ran into this in, on another project, the car rental director, making sure, and that's mine. I have this thing about a way in and a way out. In other words, for, from a public safety standpoint, there's only one door. But there's no back door, if you will.
There, there are two means of egress.
There are?
Yes, on the floor plan, you can see that there are two stairs, the, the.
No, 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 I'm talking from the condos themselves.
The condos themselves, yes, they have one, one, they need, they need code, they're code compliant for the. So for, for building code, dwelling units are required to have two means of egress, they can have one out of their unit, and then in two directions. So the two stairs provide a massive two-way egress.
Two doors into each condo?
One door.
Into each condo.
No, no, there should be two, though.
I think there should be two.
Oh, yeah, it's only in that.
It's only in that building.
How to plot the building, how, how the building, how it is.
And with this new design, there are many doors, Juliette Valpolicie, or anything.
Nope.
I think they're flight of love, if they're gonna have to go.
We can only go, and this will be sprinkled.
Actually, that would be a code requirement.
I mean, I, I've, obviously, you've done a good amount of work, and all, and all the time, like, I've, I've got so much sense. I'm gonna try to remember exactly, you know, where we were last.
We actually went back on the first edition, I think it was 2018.
Yeah, Berlin meeting when we had the first discussion.
We're not bragging about that.
Yeah, I'm sure you're not. But, uh, some of this is, like, I mean, I think that you would open hearings with the, the design review committee, if I remember, I think I was.
Right, so I think that if the board likes this gable roof design, I think that I recommend, I schedule a meeting with the design review committee, um, almost, almost, you know, whenever I can get them together, before they go too much further down the pike, so that they can see, you know, what needs to be done there, um, before, before they actually submit their next set of plans.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, I agree, my point being just that, um, I think they could probably make more substantive comment than I about, you know, the facade of the building, and fenestrations, and the layout of things, I, that, that's kind of, I don't take strong opinions, I've just been looking at elevations, so it's not my.
Right, I, I, I think our meeting with them, this, this plan has been informed quite a bit by some comments that they leave previous.
That's kind, yeah, that's kind of how I remember, to actually pick it apart, it's not beyond what I'm getting Walter's comments.
But this, this gable is a direct reflection of the ASU, that maybe is.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, it's also a reflection of the planning board.
Of your comments.
Yes, yes.
So that, decisions that you're making tonight is that you like the gable roof, and that's, that seems to be the direction that they should go with.
Yes.
Do you like the general idea of the revised cycle? I mean, they still have to, I think they still need to go back and look at the peer review comments from the first submittal and address, you know, um, you know, moving, storage, all that kind of stuff, all those things still need to be addressed. But do you, do you think that the, the layout now is more acceptable to the board?
That layout. Was the building sitting in the same direction before, or was it turned?
No, it was slightly.
It was slightly closer, so we, we made it parallel with the new driftway, brought it forward, uh, so it's a little bit closer to the driftway.
Yeah, I like it.
It's certainly an improvement, obviously, some more, yeah, a lot more thought into the landscape aspect, too. Remember, was there any pickup with, like, the parking lot area? Last time I came.
Yeah, parking lot originally was up against the, look.
Oh, alright.
And we, and we pulled it back away for a conservation request, as well. And we've also put the amenity on the grass area by the, versus out on the other side of the building, like.
But there's still the parking under, and then service parking.
We meet the parking plans.
And you're going with one and a half spaces per, per unit?
Correct.
So did you make a decision on the affordable housing? Has to be onsite, in my opinion.
I know how I feel.
See some, some on, but.
We'll go back on that.
Yeah, I can go to the.
Build a duplex down on Stockbridge Road and have two units in this.
The premium orders.
Yeah, I get, I get that.
It's much more expensive for me to build offsite than in this, to incorporate units, but I'm happy to do, but I think it's better for the community.
I think of the spirit of the bylaw.
Stockbridge is close by. Right, but the people on Stockbridge feel that they have been inundated, you know, between one thing and another.
The, the only thing I would say, and I, and I hear that, and, and that's something your affordable housing trust has mentioned to us, it's already permitted for those two duplexes, so, um, I, I think maybe the, the board has come up with a good solution about maybe two there and two, um, on site.
So, Mr. Salamondo on Stockbridge, is this to be duplexes are there, is that, is that appropriate?
So, so when Salamondo built the project in Amara, he did an affordable housing, um, he, he, he built affordable housing over there, but it was permitted for two additional structures. But it wasn't his obligation to do it.
A duplex, a duplex, yes.
Right.
So if you put a duplex there, and you have two, two units here.
Right.
But you don't go through the housing trust. They don't permit.
The housing trust almost.
So they can sell it to them for a dollar if they had a six.
Yeah, and we weren't going there for permanent, we were going there to, we were, we were going there really for support, like, saying, hey, what, what would you like, what would you support? Um, I'm assuming, like, um, that the town would get credit for all of these units, because they're apartments.
No. Only the, only the affordable units, these are local action units. It's not a forty B.
No, I, I know it's not, right?
So we, we, we don't get a credit?
Just a four, okay.
We just get credit for four.
And then we would assume that what you're building on Stockbridge would match the other house, that's what I'm trying to do.
That's a single family.
But it, but it would be similar, um, it would be similar.
We would bring a, we've already presented, we're getting your approval.
Just curious.
So then, let me ask another question for the board, just, I'm trying to get all the questions, so everybody understands. There's nineteen units here, there's two units offsite, what are the number of units for the project? Is it nineteen, or is it twenty-one? Every other project, your affordable units count towards your total.
So it's twenty-one?
Okay. I have not gone back to redo the calculation, I have not had time to do that. So there still will be a density bonus, I believe that is still required. Okay, so then the next question becomes, based on the feedback we're given tonight, how long is going to take you to develop the plans so that we have four weeks, essentially, for peer review?
Well, would we go to design review first, Karen?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna try to get a meeting with the design review, um, right away, but, I mean.
So I think, if, I think if, let's say we did design review in the next two to three weeks, probably another two to three weeks for peer review? I think that's the best approach.
Maybe the traffic, but.
Yeah.
I mean, if you need two to three weeks beyond that, then, I mean, it's, it gets to be the difference between May twenty-sixth or June nine.
May twenty-third.
I mean, that's, that's what it is, but I need, I need, you know, four weeks for, for, for John to review this.
Right, so May twenty-fifth, the board, the rocks, would that already be done?
Right, and so it has to be submitted, uh, in the April.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And based upon the request you on May in the previous, which is the additional testing and whatnot, we'll have you prove.
Alright, so I will try, I will call him to try to, uh,
Find those.
I'll try to find him and find his availability, and when your, when your people, are your people generally available anytime?
Give me two days, tell him, give us two dates, who's available, and we'll have a machine over there and the engineers.
Okay.
Appreciate the changes, I still think it's a big building. And I know it's a little piece of.
The landscaping will help kind of uncover the, cover the building, cover some of the sightlines, it won't impact as much as, yeah.
Yeah. I know when I drive down a driftway, I will not be able to see the trees on the country way, right? The building wouldn't be so high.
What, behind the.
The transit tunnel?
No, no, no. Quite a no.
No, because the, what, 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 it's about the same size, so really, it's, yeah, just for the, what the building plant is.
Because right around the corner, you're gonna be a disturbance. The density of, as you cover right here, it's a big building.
Our intent is to have a both side of the building not visible from the road. The plantings with the skies down, flowering trees. So the arrival of the situate will be the flowered rotary.
I, I think it's a real advantage that they've hired a landscape architect now, I, I really do. I I think it's a real advantage that they've hired a landscape architect now. I I really do think that, you know, that'll help with sensitivity towards the grading and, you know, it's, it'll be it'll be softened a lot.
Yes, softened a lot, which is what we're looking for here. And the gables really learn themselves, because you've heard us, that they love, people like Jacob Hatch House. They really do.
And not only that, it matches druid, they're matches, so everything's gable.
Everything's sort of coming together rather than looking very industrial. Which is not
Which I love this design.
Thank you.
I didn't know they were doing
Yeah, but what that's designed.
I didn't know they were doing that caper, but I love it. It's just not here.
Oh, I and I considerably appreciate the
Yeah. Yeah, and so, did you get the emails that I sent you last week from Bob Vogel?
Yes.
And so
And we have, just started and worked on some of those.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um kind of played around. You kind of like the flat roof building too and thought the gable roof were kind of black. But I think that there's ways that they can help improve that. And I think DAS on review committee will offer some suggestions for that as well.
A chimney or two.
A chimney?
I want to work with that.
No, I think, I think it's nice, especially if it's keeping in, within like kind of the same architectural family as the other buildings that are going on in the area. It doesn't look the same, but it's not.
The same but different, as I was saying.
Yeah.
And they'll still have kittens over it. Change is very hard, Ms. Joe.
It's hard everywhere.
So this is a public meeting. We do have people online. All right, all right, if there's anyone online that would like to make a comment, if you would, this this would be the time to do that.
All right.
If you have any comments, please um raise your hand by uh down on the participants line in your Zoom, or you can raise your, hit star nine if you're on us, uh uh joining us by telephone. So now we have the time for some public comment. If there's anyone that would like to comment.
On seven minutes.
Okay, I would say no public comments.
Okay. All right. Set for the meeting. Any further comments from the board?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Now, I want to technically, one more thing. I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, site plan administrative review, and special permit for multifamily building in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, Rimbusch Gateway District, Rimbusch Gateway Business Sub-District, V C N, G D C, G W B until May twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, at six thirty P M. And to continue the time for action for final, to the town clerk until August twenty sixth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
This is our second.
Okay.
All in favor?
I March the fourth or fifth, March
Twenty four. Today's date.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Have a great night.
Thank you. And thank you for the work that you've done. It was very serious.
As I, as I look to, I I always do my design as a partnership with the project board. I do often put products. Although sometimes it may not look like I can test to like, I I I did.
We're all, we're all gonna go by the building. I'm gonna leave it.
Have we all said? Is there anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.